Hello, good evening. Welcome to our Tuesday Evening Council Meeting. We're going to kick things off with the Pledge of Allegiance, who will be led by Superintendent Langlis.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have members of Mayor Dianne's family here. If they can join me up front, we will have a proclamation. Yes, this entire community was saddened to learn of Mayor Dianne's death, recent passing, and I meant what I said in the paper. Paul loved Lewiston very much, and Lewiston loved him right back. We're joined here by his daughter Michelle and members of the family that Michelle will introduce.
Thank you so much, Carl, for inviting us to be here. It means a lot. This is my partner, Rob, and my daughter Charlotte, and my son Brennan, and my mother Diane, and my Aunt Rachel, my dad's sister, my sister Melody and her husband Mike, and their son Michael Paul, and Marissa, who is Mike's daughter, and Brooke, who is Mike's girlfriend. And we also have one of our, me and my dad's former mock trial students here, Ethan, and so other friends as well. And we really appreciate you being here to support us, and it means a lot to my dad and our family.
Yes, thanks again for being here tonight, and I'm proud to say that my dad was a proud Lewistonian, and he never gave up on the city. He worked so hard for everything in Lewiston. We're really proud of him, and he was a great family man, so that's why we can stand here together today. I'm really proud of him. He always had work ethics, work first, then play, and now my motto is, "What would my dad do?"
So we have a proclamation here. Whereas the city of Lewiston mourns the lost former mayor, Paul R. Dianne, who passed away on April 17th, 2025. And whereas upon being elected mayor in 1980, he was, he bound the twin cities together through the pursuit of mutual economic development by building up the Lewiston Economic Growth Council, and whereas Mayor Dianne worked to expand access to higher education by helping to establish the University of Maine's Lewiston Auburn Campus, and whereas after leaving City Hall, he championed individual and collective rights as the first executive director of Maine's Worker Compensation Board, later leading the International Association of Industrial Accident Boards and Commissions. And whereas Mayor Dianne continued to contribute to his community as a novelist, philanthropist, and member of both the Lewiston Auburn Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce and Central Maine Medical Center Board of Trustees. And whereas Mayor Dianne measured future generations by coaching the Lewiston High School Mock Trial team to win multiple state championships several years running, and now therefore I, Carl Elsheline, Mayor of Lewiston, Maine, do hereby proclaim May 6, 2025, as Paul R. Dianne Day within the city of Lewiston in tribute to the enduring impact of his public service. A round of applause for Paul.
Diane, thank you so much for being here. I will give you the proclamation. We have flowers for you. And I should have given this to Paul when he was alive, but we have here a Lewiston challenge coin for Paul. And before we begin, Madam Clerk, I would like the record to reflect that we have our new administrator, Brian Kenrath, who is here for his very first meeting. Madam Clerk, I believe we're ready to begin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All roll call votes for this meeting will begin with a counselor of Ward 2.
I understand we have minutes.
We do at the April 15th meeting.
May I have a motion, please?
Move to accept as presented.
Second.
Counselor Chittum, second by Counselor Najin. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are now up to public comment. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government. This period is reserved for non-agenda items. Public comment is allowed during, is also allowed during individual agenda items. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name for the record, and please indicate if you're a Lewiston resident. Because this is the business meeting of the Lewiston City Council, all questions should be directed to the mayor, who will ask staff to follow up at a future time. It is illegal for the city council to allow comments related to personnel matters. All personnel complaints should be made directly to the city administration office.
Ronnie Parity, Ward 6, here again. First of all, Martell School. I haven't heard anything. I haven't seen anything there, and people are asking me, they have, people are giving up about whether something is going to be done at Martell School. So please, for us seniors, please get that going. My second thing, which I've been here many times about, is public health. We need to do something about public health. There are 10 essential things for public health services, and one of them is monitor health status to identify community health problems. You people have identified problems in the community, and we have seen problems in the community, and one of them is needles and everything. And I did pass out a paper for suggestions for needles and litter and stuff like that. My suggestion is that we need to have a community conversations. After, again, we need to sit down as a community and talk about these situations. There was another shooting up to Rideout Avenue last night, or yesterday. That's up where a lot of kids are. I know, I used to do a lot of public health nursing up in that community, up in that area. What is wrong? Why, where's the safety committee? Why, we need to look at safety. Safety is a public health issue. We have a lot of problems. Another thing you should partnership, I'm suggesting Lewiston should partnership with public health nursing from the state. The reason I'm saying that is maybe we should start having clinics for hepatitis B and test them for hepatitis C. If we got needles, we got those diseases around, and also HIV. I gave you the report, what happened in Bangor with HIV and the spread of HIV, where some is coming. We got, hepatitis A is by fecal material and urine, okay? So again, we got problems, people, and we're not looking at public health. Why don't we partnership with the state of Maine, public health nurses? That's where I used to work, over to DHS as a public health nurse. They do clinics. They can do a lot of things to help Lewiston out with public health. If you don't do it, we're ending up in a big problem. CDC has been cut. CDC and the Federals have been cut and everything. So we need to get these meetings going, and we need to have the public's input in these meetings. Also, I want to mention Mark Parity Park. Mark Parity Park needs to be cleaned up, and nobody has done that park. Everybody mentions every other park besides Mark Parity. I'm sorry, that was my late husband. Thank you.
Further public comment.
Matthew Agren, Ward 4. May is designated National Military Appreciation Month by the U.S. Congress in 1999. It was to provide our nation with an opportunity to publicly demonstrate our appreciation for the service and sacrifice made by our military members, those who served, those who have served, and those who died serving. There is a strong military connection to the Lewiston area. If you don't believe it, go look at the park. It's an important time now for us to recognize these men and women of our armed forces, recognize the families who contribute and support the sacrifices they make, as well as the role of the military families who have lost members and the suffering and struggles that they go through because of it. Welcome to our new city administrator. Enjoy our city. I hope you do well here. Two years ago, I asked about a crosswalk being put on East Avenue near the intersection of Grove and Warren, or Homefield and Newman, and was told it was on the plan for the year 2026, and it had, by both some of the sitting counselors and some of our former council. Can we get it confirmed that that is still the plan? Because we have kids who cross that road there from Farwell School System or from the middle school going the other way. Somebody's going to get killed there. As Ronnie said, our seniors are interested in what's going on with Martell School Project and our partner, Lewiston Housing Authority. We were told that the first stage was fully funded, and they were good to go this spring. We have not seen any sign of it, and this is the project our seniors have been looking forward to. I would like to see that we get it, soon get a complete transparent report from our council president on his full interactions with the Church of Safe Injection. Because as it was stated in a recent meeting at the end, even the rest of his own council has no idea what's going on, and the public definitely has no idea what's going on with those meetings. Finally, this is also National Foster Care Awareness Month. Let us recognize the children and youths who have ended up, for whatever reason, within the foster care system and to all those individuals who support them. Thank you for your time.
Further public comment.
Matt Roy, Ward 3. On previous council agendas in previous years, there has been a proclamation, some kind of recognition of municipal clerks, because it's Professional Municipal Clerk Week. Our city clerk has been here almost 26 years now, has been elected by her regional peers in New England to serve on the Board of Directors for the International National Board, has been recognized for her dedication to her service, but yet we have no proclamation during the week for her profession. Thank you.
Further public comment.
Andrew Jones, Ward 2. I'm here again to speak about the now-censored LPD Facebook page. I've been previously invited to council to speak about the matter by the admin of the city's page and also via email by Mr. Chittum, so I came before you at the previous meeting to speak my piece. However, I am no closer to satisfaction of the question I posed on the page via email and in person, which was, "Mr. Chittum, who put you up to this?" Another community member also felt as strongly as I did about this and submitted a FOIA request for communications between the council, city staff, and the police chief regarding shutting down comments. The results I found illuminating, although not surprising. Before I get into that, I would like to praise Chief St. Pierre for his commitment to free speech, no matter how repugnant some of the comments can get. As my friend Matt Agren said previously, people post dumb things on the internet. A good example of that is Mr. Harriman, who was lampooned for months after telling the world about his bathroom habits in the city's alleys and parking garages. Anyway, it came as no surprise that Scott Harriman appears to be a major player in getting the citizenry silenced on that page. The same Scott Harriman who held the administrator role of Lewiston Rocks for a time, in tandem with his city council position, and was oft accused of removing posts and comments critical to political causes he supported, which is somewhat ironic given that Lewiston Rocks was originally Lewiston Rocks the Vote, a more political education platform instead of a virtual town square it is today. In other words, Mr. Harriman appears to be an enemy of the First Amendment, at least when it comes to ideas he disagrees with. The most disappointing part of all of this has been Mr. Chittum's response to the screenshots that Mr. Harriman had carefully curated, some of which were crude political speech, not racist garbage. In his response on October 16th, he appears to think that Mr. Harriman's examples are what public discourse has stooped to and questions the value of public comments on a city department page. "Mr. Chittum, during your time on this council, you've gained a reputation for getting the facts yourself before making a decision, and it appears that you have allowed Mr. Harriman to use you to push an anti-free speech agenda. Would it have changed your mind if you saw how much public support that there is for the local police and on the city's social media accounts? Perhaps I should go through the LPD's page and scrounge up positive examples of discourse, as it appears you did not do your due diligence before bringing this to the council." Thank you.
Further public comment.
Kevin Bolard, Ward 4, President of Cadence Kitchen. On this past Thursday morning, the Emergency Warming Center concluded its operations. Over the past six months, a location that was previously the site of a tragic community incident was transformed into a sanctuary providing safety, comfort, and shelter for more than 350 individual clients. The demographic served ranged from 18 to over 70 years of age. Our facility reached maximum capacity at 98 occupants, with average nightly attendance between 65 and 75 individuals. Meals were provided seven nights a week through extensive community partnerships. The Rusty Lantern contributed meals four nights per week. Beige College delivered freshly-prepared dinners every Thursday, while Fridays and Saturdays featured community-sponsored meals, with numerous local organizations and individuals providing home-cooked offerings for our clients. Community members participated consistently throughout the week, contributing donations and volunteering their time to assist with meal service. This exemplifies genuine collaborative community engagement. We extend our sincere appreciation to the city administration and council for their continued support of Cadence Kitchen mission to address the needs of our most vulnerable residents. I would like to briefly share a couple of feedback received from a couple of our guests. "I stayed at the Warming Center for over a month. It gave me the boost to get back on my feet that I needed. Without them, I wouldn't have the good job in home that I have. Thank you so much to the staff. I will forever be grateful." "Thank you for letting me be part of the Warming Center. If it was not for the Warming Center, I would be in a worse place mentally and are frozen this winter and not have warmer clothing. Thank you guys so much for everything you do. I honestly don't know what I had done if it weren't for you guys. You are the inspiration for our seasonal Warming Center in Silver City, New Mexico. Amazing work. The biggest challenges are still ahead of us. Addressing the chronic homelessness facing the Lewiston Auburn communities won't be accomplished with temporary emergency programs. Traditional programs with full wraparound services are a crucial step in getting individuals back on a self-sustainable lifestyle. Our organization has positioned ourselves to be part of the solution, and we look forward to working with the city to address the community challenge. Thank you."
Further public comment. Public comment is now closed. Madam Clerk, item number one.
Item number one, public hearing in final passage regarding an amendment to the Vehicles for Hire ordinance to eliminate licensing requirements for taxi companies. Requested action that the proposed amendments to the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 82, Vehicles for Hire, Article 1 in general and Article 2, Taxi Cabs, receive final passage by a roll call vote.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittum, second by Counselor Harriman. Discussion, public comment. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Item number two.
Item number two, public hearing in final passage regarding an amendment to the Amusement and Entertainment Ordinance to eliminate the public hearing requirement for the annual renewal of special amusement permits. Requested action that the proposed amendments to the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Amusement and Entertainment, Article 3, special amusement permit, receive final passage by a roll call vote.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Glant.
Second.
Second by Counselor Chittum. Discussion, public comment. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I understand we have a late-breaking agenda addition.
We do. We have.
For the public's benefit, could you please explain?
Yes, sir. We have item 2B, which was added this afternoon by city staff. It was an oversight that it wasn't on a previous agenda. It pertains to the farmer's market, which is kicking off on Sunday, so thank you for allowing staff to add it to the agenda. Item 2B, public hearing for approval of an outdoor entertainment permit for the Lewiston Farmer's Market concerts. Requested action to conduct a public hearing on an application for an outdoor entertainment event for the Lewiston Farmer's Market concerts and to grant a permit for an outdoor entertainment event as required by the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-3, to the Lewiston Farmer's Market Association for Outdoor Music Concerts for the Market contingent upon positive recommend- upon positive recommendations from the Police Department, Fire Department, Code Health Officer, and Land Use Inspector regarding compliance with all regulations and compliance with all city ordinances.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Najin.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Glant. Discussion? Counselor Najin.
Just one piece. There were conversations a while ago about setting up a set of ordinances for approval of farmers' markets in general, which would streamline some of these processes. So we have several different pieces that kind of overlap, and I'm just wondering if that process has died or if we're continuing to see if we can have one particular license that would hold farmers' markets in general.
Counselor Najin, I can answer that a little bit, I think. This was more for the music that they're holding, the, excuse me, entertainment. So that's, I don't think every farmer's market does that. So this is specifically just to, not the actual running of the farmer's market, but for the entertainment they'll be providing, because they're going to have live music, where they have different performers each week. That's why we have this on the agenda. And with it coming up Sunday, it was an oversight on our part.
Okay.
But this isn't licensing the act of them selling the vegetables and the baked goods and all those wonderful things that they have down there.
Completely understood. I was just under the impression that at one point in time, the Good Food Council of Lewiston Auburn and the Lewiston Farmers Market were working with the city in order to create a license that would encompass all of these pieces, including the live entertainment portion. But it seems like maybe...
That hasn't happened.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Chittam.
Thank you. Question for the city clerk. Is this farmer's market licensed to operate daily, or is there a restriction that it be once a week?
I believe that's identified in the memorandum of understanding.
We have a memorandum of understanding with the farmer's market that they operate on Sundays.
Okay. Because this application for live music allows music every single day, but it's...
Well, it's on the days that they operate.
Given that it's on the operational days. All right. Thank you.
Public comment? Back to the council. Looking forward to live music happening at the farmer's market this Sunday. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Two? Yes. Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Item number three.
Item number three, amendment to Policy Manual Number Six, The Rules Governing the City Council. Requested action to approve the proposed amendment to the rules governing the City Council, City Policy Manual Number Six.
May I have a motion, please? Yes, Counselor Glant.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Soul. And we're going to have Administrator Kane-Rath kick us off.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I am requesting an amendment to the council rules and procedures to add the city administrator's report as a standing council agenda item. This is to increase, obviously, transparency with the council and the public as far as administration initiatives and what we're working on. This is something that is commonplace in most other communities around the state, most of their cities, and something I have done throughout my time in this job and other places. So again, I'm requesting this to be added. It is here, slated to go after ceremonial presentations and recognitions. However, there was some discussion earlier about it could also be added after the first public comment period, if that's preferable. Either way works. But again, this is to update not only the council but the public on administration initiatives, activities, and all other goings-on, and invite questions and, obviously, transparency overall. So again, we could move it, if you'd like, down to below the first public comment period or leave it as is in this draft. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted it to be after the public comment period only because you may be talking about things they're going to talk about as well, or they may decide to change their mind and talk about things you talked about, and I'm not sure how clear we can be, seeing how we're not, as roles, not being able to comment on what the public says. I know we can't up here. I'm going to assume you're going to be in the same situation, that everything goes to the mayor. So my opinion, if we moved it to after public comments, then if they want to comment on what you said, it would have to be at the next meeting. That was my justification for it.
Yeah, and Counselor Glant, I wholeheartedly agree with that. I think that's a great spot for that. Counselor Najin.
First, I think it's a great addition to the agenda overall. Secondly, folks could comment in the second comment period, could they not, if they decided to say? So I'm fine with the recommendation for where it falls, whatever staff is comfortable with, but what Counselor Glant put forward makes sense, so.
Members of the public are also, can also email publiccomment@lewistonmain.gov at any time. Counselor Chittam.
Thank you. I'm encouraged by this addition to the agenda or to the rules, Mr. Administrator. I would make a motion. Who made the motion initially?
Counselor Glant, seconded by Counselor Soul.
All right. I would suggest an amendment, then, to move city administrator's report to immediately following public comment in the rules.
Thank you, Counselor Chittam. Madam Clerk, could we consider this a friendly amendment, or does this need to be an official amendment?
It can be a friendly amendment, sir.
Counselor, well, we know that Counselor Glant is in favor of this. Counselor Soul, are you?
Yes.
All right. It has now been accepted as a friendly amendment. Main motion is still on the table. Further comments from the council? Public comment for this agenda item?
Again, Matt Roy, Ward Three. So the city administrator has been in office not even 48 hours yet, and he's done more to change the rules than the council has in a year and a half. And he's kept his word three months ago, when he, when his contract was approved, that transparency was going to be a key part of his tenure. And again, he's done so already. Now, he can go further and ingratiate himself to me and probably Mr. Agron, as you know, we are champions of transparency, apparently, and move the other reports and updates to the beginning of the meeting, and not when there's literally two non-council, well, two non-council members in this chamber. And better yet, as the administrator rightly pointed out, other municipalities have, well, he didn't actually say this, but he was going there, in my opinion, actually having separate reports, not just one catch-all. And counties also have a administrator's report that's at the beginning of the meeting before any old business and new business, and hopefully we can take that up hopefully soon. Thank you.
Further public comment? Public comment is now closed. Administrator Kane-Rath, I saw this on my place setting. Is this today's update?
So, and that is example of what, this is a small version, but an example of what they will look like, and yes...
Would you like to give this update at this time, or?
Or I can do it in reports later, if you'd like.
Okay. Yeah, I guess. Yeah, why don't we just do it now, if you're amenable to that?
Okay, let's do it right now. So first, I do just want to thank everyone. So I've done three public meet-and-greet sessions now before I arrived. And so I want to thank sincerely the Chickadee Restaurant, Community Credit Union, as well as Tree Street Youth for hosting. We had a great turnout at some of these events, met a lot of people, a lot of great comments, and a good learning experience for me. And I just want to say I was overall impressed with a lot of the energy and the enthusiasm for this community, and a lot of the great questions. It's been really encouraging and really positive, so thank you all for that. I also want to let everyone know that we're not stopping here. These are going to be at least a monthly occurrence. They may have different formats, maybe more of a listening session, maybe more of a town hall or a meet-and-greet, but I was serious when I talked about public engagement and transparency. We're going to be out in the community, we're going to be talking to people where they live, not just here at City Hall. And so this is going to be really important, and I believe you can only do this job really well when you have your ear to the community and understand what's going on out there. So these are going to continue. I look forward to them. I look forward to meeting many of you in the months and years to come. So thank you for that. Secondly, I just want to welcome a few new staff members to our city staff team. John Blaze, the Deputy Director of Economic and Community Development, arrived about a month ago, so welcome to him. Elvin Padilla, a landscape and tree worker, maverick archer and equipment mechanic. Stuart Kuschman, a highway worker, Class B, and also Joe Grockmull in our office, who's here tonight in the back. Welcome to all of you. We look forward to your service to the city of Lewiston and appreciate you being here. And our door is always open, administration, for any issues, concerns, or questions or feedback you want to give us. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Administrator Kane-Rath. Further comments from the council before we vote on this? Yes. Counselor Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like it already. I appreciate that. Thank you, Administrator.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Two? Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Item number four.
Item number four, public hearing and adoption of resolve approving the Lewiston Fiscal Year 26, Federal Fiscal Year 2025, Community Development Block Grant Budget and Action Plan for submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Requested action to conduct a public hearing and adopt the resolve approving the Lewiston Fiscal Year 26, Federal Fiscal Year 2025, Community Development Block Grant Budget and Action Plan for submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Glant.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Najin. We have Director Libby here to kick us off and answer any questions, should there be any.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is your second viewing of this budget. Just as a reminder, the memo from Catherine Ruth gives you a good description of this process, but a lot of the process is spelled out by HUD. The HUD process requires a citizen committee be established to review applications for grants from these funds, as well as review the public projects that have been proposed. You, Mr. Mayor, appointed that committee late last year. It was chaired by Pauline Gudis. She's a veteran of the committee and did a great job steering this group to unanimous recommendations, which are now before you. The citizen committee has a long history of working really hard to evaluate all the requests, come up with a plan that makes good fiscal sense, puts this money to good projects that help raise incomes, reduce blight, and invest in our downtown community. So the budget is largely the same as what was presented to you earlier in the year. There was one adjustment where funding for a portion of a general assistance caseworker was initially proposed, that was pulled back. That small portion of funds, about $40,000, was then distributed amongst the other nonprofit organizations to get them at least to their, for three of them, the top three scoring organizations, to get them their full request, and then the remaining three that are getting funded most of their requests. A couple other projects to note, there is some money going into Sunnyside Park to help move that redevelopment project forward. It's about $1 million a year that HUD provides the city for this program. That's really the short story. I'm happy to answer questions, and Catherine Ruth is also here. Catherine's our staff member. She does a great job organizing the work and managing the program with the rest of our staff.
Thank you so much, Director Libby. I also want to note that we have Chair Gudis here in the audience. Thank you so much for your service on this committee. Yes, questions? Counselor Chittam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Director Libby. Thank you. As I go through this well-prepared document, thank you for that as well. There's a phrase that jumped out at me, and pardon me if this has already been answered, and I was asleep at the time, but under budget contingency plan, it requires, HUD requires that alternative funding recommendations be approved by city council in the event of a surplus or a shortfall. Can you address that, Director Libby?
Sure. The challenge with putting this budget together and getting the money out the door is that we're required to have you approve a budget before we know the exact dollar amount that HUD will be providing. So HUD staff have recommended to us that we budget based on last year's award. We've done that in the materials we've presented to you, and I believe the contingency plan provides that if the, if the amount of funding is less than what has, what arrived last year, that staff have the ability to make the reductions consistent with the will of the committee, which is, you know, say, a 1% cut across the board or a 2% cut across the board or what have you. And then anything before a substantial threshold, I think of 15%, would trigger a second review by the citizen committee. So that's the contingency plan, roughly speaking.
All right. So apparently I was asleep because the council did approve that contingency plan. Is that correct?
I believe that's what we are asking for you to...
Yes.
Yeah. That's what we're asking for you in this...
Tonight?
In this resolve, tonight.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't have the resolve in front of me.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Further questions, comments from the council? Yes, Counselor Najin.
Just a quick comment. Ultimately, Community Development Manager Ruth was very helpful in this entire process. It was excellent. Really appreciated her services. Obviously, your contributions to this were great. I appreciate all the services of the folks who served on the CAC, and to especially note Chair Gudis, who kept us all together and well-organized in order to get this done in a timely manner in a very small window. And so thank everybody for the efforts that they put in.
Thank you, Counselor. And we should recognize Counselor Najin was the citizen, city council rep to the committee and put a great deal of effort into supporting the committee's work as well.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Are you good? Public comment for this agenda item?
Matt Roy, Ward Three. There seems to be a misnomer here, because the federal fiscal year is going to be done September 30th. Our fiscal year starts July, notwithstanding what the memo, well, the memo in the agenda information sheet said, quote-unquote, "the reorg, the pending reorganization of federal agencies," and against federal law, the president only announcing fiscal year 2026's federal budget last Friday, which, again, this is a process devoid of all transparency, logic, and competence of fiscal management. Thank you.
Further public comment? Public comment is now closed. Back to the council. Anything further, Director Libby? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Two? Yes. Word Three?
Sorry. Counselor Chittam, did you have something?
Yes, I did. I've quickly scanned the resolve, and I don't see a provision in here that authorizes the citizens committee to make the adjustments that Director Libby talked about.
Counselor Chittam, if you refer to the end of the resolve, it discusses the action plan, and that's part of the packet.
By reference, then, the action plan does say that...
Correct. We didn't put the whole thing, but it's referencing their action plan, and what Director Libby described is the action plan.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Further questions, comments from the council? Counselor Najin?
Just real quick, the action plan actually outlined more than a 25% shift in funding either way. Just wanted to name that, because it's not in the document. So that triggers back to the CAC and then would come back before the council. Otherwise, staff has permission based on the calculations that were laid forward in the distribution to allocate the funds appropriately.
That's correct. And we also have a provision that in the case that we received more funds than we did last year, and how to deal with that as well, we just have zero confidence that's actually going to happen this year, but we've planned for it. Yes.
Anything further, councilors? Madam Clerk, I appreciate your patience. Please call the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Excellent. Item number five.
Item number five, public hearing and adoption of resolve approving the Lewiston fiscal year twenty-six, federal fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, home budget and action plan for submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Requested action to conduct a public hearing and adopt the resolve approving Lewiston fiscal year twenty-six, federal fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, home budget and action plan for submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam?
Second.
Second by Counselor Herrmann. Did you? Yes, Counselor Herrmann. Director Libby, please kick us off.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I apologize, I should have introduced myself. I'm Nate Libby, Director of Economic and Community Development. What we have prepared is the annual home funds budget and program. Home funds have been dispersed from HUD to the cities of Lewiston and Auburn for many years. Neither Lewiston nor Auburn alone are cities large enough to qualify for these HUD funds, but as a partnership, as a consortium, the two cities together do qualify. And so, there's been about twenty years of history of collaborating in this way. Auburn serves as the, I would sort of describe them as the lead grantee. They have additional responsibilities with program administration and reporting. We are a sub-recipient, and so we do not have those responsibilities. We send a lot of our material over to our colleagues in Auburn for review and approval, and together we work on program compliance. These funds are used for supporting affordable housing developments and helping to prevent homelessness. So the budget we've drafted for you is roughly the same as in previous years with some carry-forward funds. I will share with you, in, you know, being frank, these funds come with incredible strings attached, and I'd say burden some administrative requirements. So over the last several years, while we've had these funds, they've been difficult to spend. They require projects of a certain size and sophistication where our partners can work with us to file all the paperwork and do all the reporting. So in the past, we've used the funds for DeWitt, for example, two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. We've used funds for Wedgewood around the same figure. And so, that's where big chunks of the money go. If we expect a project in the hopper, which we've talked with you at length about, that is a fit for these funds, we will move quickly to try to place them there. But I'm just sharing with you that we can set out a budget with best intentions, but we have to get projects that fit. The other piece of the program is a security deposit program to help folks who are experiencing homelessness or nearly experiencing homelessness get some help with their security deposits. So that is a program where we do ten or fifteen a year. Again, incredibly labor-intensive, but it is sort of a last line of resort for folks that need that kind of help. Those are the two main areas of where the funds go. Happy to answer questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Director. Public comment for this agenda item. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Word Two? Yes. Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Director Libby. Item number six.
Item number six, final budget public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six municipal budget. Requested action to conduct a final budget public hearing to receive citizen input and communication regarding the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-six municipal budget.
The budget hearing is now open.
Matt Roy, Word Three. Again, as I've stated for two years now, this budget process is not transparent, illogical. We're going to have the public hearing before any discussion on the actual items of the budget, before you actually approve the budget, limiting our, any future public comment to that agenda item only, and then the charade of...
Do you mind speaking into the mic, sir?
I am speaking into the mic. Thank you, Mayor. Now, where was I? Yes, the charade that was the budget workshops after departmental presentations and general discussions, where there was at least two pub, published based on the published schedule, which apparently the mayor and the council decided just to get rid of not having any general discussion, and then the last general discussion lasting a whopping sixteen minutes. Thank you.
Matthew Agron, Word Four. I hope when you go through this budget, there is careful consideration into what happens when state budget gets held up. Federal funds get held up this year. How do we pay for essential services here in Lewiston? There are projects that are wonderful, but we can't afford them on our own, and it, there is a grand possibility that both those budgets are going to be delayed, funds held. What do we do? I know it's going to affect the school budget horribly. It's going to affect our city budget horribly. We need to be prepared for it.
Further public, yes?
Ronnie Parity, Word Six. I'm concerned because we didn't really get a chance to talk much about the budget, and the public didn't. And I'd like to see you guys, city council or something, go out and talk to people about it. You wouldn't believe that people don't even know how much their mortgage is going up. Again, there's no transparency around, and I know seniors that are being evicted from apartments because the landlords are bringing up the rents. I know some of you talk and know, I know like Susan does, because she's in that area of town where she knows what's going on, but do you guys really know what's going on out there and what people are doing and saying? Because they're not saying it to you guys. I just want you to know. I've heard so much, and I hear so much on, or see so much on social media, of people are not telling you what they really think. Thank you.
Further public comment for this budget hearing? Budget hearing is now closed. Item number seven.
Seven, item number seven. Item number seven, receipt of the Finance Committee's recommendation regarding the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-six municipal budget. Requested action to receive and review the recommendation of the Finance Committee regarding the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-six municipal budget.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Chittam, followed by Counselor Glant. Counselor Glant, would you like to kick us off as the Finance Chair?
Yes. I guess I'll start with, we're re-looking to revamp the whole system. We think it's not practical that we supply you a letter today with recommendations when most of the decisions are already made, and we feel the Finance Department should have an input prior to this session at this point, so we can make valid recommendations, in a sense, not that we couldn't, and we did make some valid recommendations there, but, you know, we're concerned with some of the rules and policies in the city, and Counselor Chittam's, Chittam, 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 he knows, working really hard at developing a new system that will work over the summer to bring back to everyone, that'll be more fair-based, may make more sense. So, you know, our recommendation is in line to what we're going to be doing this evening, and what we decided, but we just feel that it'd be better for us to be able to redevelop a system, whereas, you know, we're going to present to you, just like a department does, maybe at the end of all the departments, probably would make sense, what our recommendations are based on reviewing the whole budget and what we've seen, so it would have more validity to what we see going on today. So that's why, it's a good recommendation, but talks about those items, but that's really, we feel, is a missing piece, and rewriting our policy procedure, whatever that might take, is what we're going to address here through our meetings over the next few meetings, and how we can do that.
Thank you very much. Yes, makes some sense. Counselor Chittam, as another member of the Finance Committee, would you like to say anything?
Well, I wholeheartedly agree with Counselor Glant. I think the card is definitely in front of the horse when it comes to Finance Committee recommendations on what is effectively a done deal on the budget. So we will be, we will be working on that. In addition to the initiative that Counselor Glant referred to, currently, we have a policy, I'm sorry, an ordinance, that requires us to spend no more than eighty percent of the retired debt over the past three years. That, as I've said many times before, is a recipe for us to reduce our debt completely to zero. I personally am in favor of that, but I realize that I'm an idealist and that realism occasionally has to rear its ugly head in this world, and we have to recognize that there are items for which we have to borrow. So the Finance Committee will be looking at developing new guidelines or new metrics to control the spending or the borrowing of the city instead of the eighty percent rule. That's an ongoing effort as well. As to this budget, I want to recognize Acting Administrator O'Malley. I'm not sure what your title is today, Deputy Administrator.
That would be Deputy Administrator.
You were Acting Administrator at the time, though, and I would like to publicly recognize the yeoman's service that Brian O'Malley made. He made our job up here on the council very much easier, because anything that could be cut from the budget was cut. My understanding is that marching orders to all the department heads were no new services. The goal is to keep the tax increase as low as humanly possible, and I think one of the reasons that this process went so smoothly from our perspective is that we were looking at a budget that essentially consisted of only essential services. So thank you for that, Brian O'Malley.
Further comments from the council about the budget letter? Public comment for this agenda item?
Matt Roy, Word Three. As the council president points out, you know, realism, well, there is the realism that there are many points in this letter that have reared its head in every edition for the last decade, you know, not using capital versus the general fund budget, you know, research, quote-unquote researching, as the council points out, the ordinance of the eighty percent rule. This has been in multiple letters in the last two to three years, and again, I got to make the comparison, it's, the Finance Committee's letter is essentially the analysis to a report from a legislative committee that is published, and it sits in a bookshelf somewhere, collecting dust year after year. Thank you.
Further public comment? Public comment's now closed. Back to the council. Yes, Counselor Najin?
One of the pieces that both Counselors Chittam and Glant had covered were the concerns around how the Finance Committee, when the Finance Committee presents its recommendations and how it presents the recommendations, and I wholeheartedly agree that I think there are a bunch of things in our budget process that could be tweaked a bit to function better, and that's one of those pieces, having the recommendations from the Finance Committee in front of us before we start talking about what we're doing with the budget and what our bottoms are, all of these pieces that are constantly debated but are not coming with a recommendation from the Finance Committee until the vote on the budget. And so, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing what can happen with that, and I also absolutely agree with the reconfiguring of the eighty percent rule. The truth is, we should never borrow at all, and the truth is, we'll always have to until our tax base can actually pay for whatever comes up in any given year. And so, you know, we have to figure out a balance in that, otherwise, we're managing a decline if we're continually reducing real-world dollars while inflation goes up. So thank you for the recommendations.
Further comments from the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Word Two? Yes.
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number eight.
Item number eight, resolve authorizing the use of seven million, three hundred seventy-four thousand, five hundred thirty dollars from the general fund unassigned fund balance for capital outlay purchases and other one-time expenses. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing the use of seven million, three hundred seventy-four thousand, five hundred thirty dollars from the general fund unassigned fund balance for capital outlay purchases and other one-time expenses.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam?
Second.
Second by Counselor Najin. Director Roy, would you like to say something?
So these are all the projects that were put forth in front of you with the add of the homeless shelter for four hundred thousand, and the add for the items from MIS that were pulled out for the new software. So there has been no other changes to this for the seven point three million dollars.
Thank you. Discussion from the council? Yes, Counselor Najin?
Just as one piece that I just wanted to touch on really quick about the four hundred thousand dollars that's being allocated in this budget to help support shelter operations, I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding and miscommunication as far as how this money is going to be allocated, if it is actually going to be allocated. I think there's conversations that we have to have with the shelter operator so that we make sure that we're actually working in partnership. I also think that overall, it's a really bad precedent to take general fund money and apply it to operations, and so I think when we start to talk about the costs of standing up a shelter, that's something that there's not a lot of funding available in the market, right? And so, that's something that I think we all have requested, meaning we all being, this council has requested that a low-barrier shelter operate. We have agreed with the RFP, put out an RFP which Cadence Kitchen answered. We've approved the proposal that Cadence Kitchen put forward. The challenge that I have is that ultimately, we have several nonprofit services that exist in our community whose operational expenses do not come from the tax dollars. Standing up a shelter, getting a shelter functioning, there's very limited funding for that portion. I think that could pass a straight face test. Paying for operations, I think, is a horrible precedent to set, because the next conversation will be New Beginnings or another organization in our community, and so I just want to point that out. I think that using GA funds in order to fund shelter operations is what is the established precedent in the state of Maine and what we should be following. So there was a lot of words. Ultimately, the four hundred thousand dollars we're allocating for isn't necessarily just being spent without further conversation about how our partnership looks with the shelter operator and what it supports.
Further public comment, or I'm sorry, further council comment? Public comment for this agenda item? Yeah, step right up.
Hi there, so this is my first time in, Michelle Goslin. I don't know what...
And I'm sorry, where do you, can you just identify where you live?
I live on Cherbrook Ave in Lewiston.
Thank you. Please continue.
I would like to ask, if that portion of the budget is not being approved, what are your plans to help the homeless and a shelter in Lewiston? Because to me, following everything that's happened, and the grant that is two-point-five million dollars that's waiting to support a shelter, they are looking to have some sort of small commitment from our city that, you know, in order to move forward, they need support from the city. So if that isn't approved, then how do you propose that these homeless, homelessness is resolved, and it will cost you a lot more than four hundred thousand dollars to take care of the homeless in our city? So I guess I'm just asking. There's lots of questions and things like that, but to me, that's a very minimal number to take care of people in our community. I'm a real estate agent. My heart is in making sure that people have homes, and I just, I disagree, and I'd like to know how you propose that that's not something to approve.
Further public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council? Yes, Counselor Najin?
I can certainly address any of the questions that were brought up outside of this agenda item, but I would say, first and foremost, that shelters are not housing. Shelters are an emergent need to put people in a place where they're not on our streets. Housing is housing, and so there's a backend to that that we also have to fulfill, and I absolutely agree with all the points that you brought up. They're all concerns of mine as well.
To speak to the Administrator O'Malley, or Deputy Administrator O'Malley, or Director Libby, you know, if we approve these funds tonight, which also includes the four hundred set aside for a homeless shelter, you know, to Counselor Najin's point, there would be a further agreement and conversation before those funds would be dispersed. Is that accurate?
That's correct. I mean, Cadence Kitchen would have to have a plan in place and have the building and the funding, and we would have a MOU with him as well, like we did when he ran the emergency warming center. So we're not just handing out four hundred thousand dollars after this is approved, I guess is my point, that there'll be, there's a process.
Mine as well. Thank you so much. Further comments from the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Word Two? Yes.
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Passed a vote of seven to zero.
Item number nine.
Item number nine, order authorizing the city administrator to provide city services totaling eighty-four thousand...
$84,566.07 and Cash Donations Totalling $58,000 for City Nonprofit Organization Activities in accordance with the fiscal year 26 city council-approved list. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the city administrator to provide city services totaling $84,566.07 and cash donations totaling $58,000 for city nonprofit organization activities in accordance with the fiscal year 26 city council-approved list.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
At Councilor Glant.
Second.
Standing by Councilor Chittam. Anything you'd like to say, Director Roy?
The, if you remember, these nonprofits came to you, I believe, the second budget meeting we had and requested, and you approved it all. The $1,500 for the Rally for Recovery, just a reminder, that comes from the opioid fund. So, that is not in the actual budget, but it's for your approval of those funds.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions, comments from the councilors? Yes, Councilor Soul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, my question is for Director Roy. The, these funds are coming out of the fund balance. Is that correct?
No, these funds were entered into the budget. So, that night that they presented, you requested that additional $60,000. A reminder, the $10,000 for the Liberty Festival was already in the budget. The others were not. So, those were added to the budget when we were doing all the adjustments to get down to that dollar. That was added in.
Okay. So, first, I just want to say, I really think we have, we have a lot of great nonprofits in Lewiston. And these are all wonderful choices. My only concern is, I would like to see some sort of, I don't know, a program or a method to how much we are giving nonprofits each agenda, each budget. So, if they raise money, we match it. I don't know, there is something. Because it doesn't feel right to just, for us to just be sitting up here and just say, okay, they're asking for $10,000, let's just do it. There's no discussion on maybe half or just, I don't know, there needs to be something, a formula. I don't, to say yes, this is what we want to, we want to help these nonprofits, but I also want to see the nonprofits helping themselves as well. So, I guess that's my, that's my little speech. Thank you.
Further questions, comments from the council? Councilor Najin.
I would just poke forward that this is, the vast majority of this is actually programming within the city. Several cities that have the ability to pay for these types of programs just do. And so, you know, there are communities that pay for their own fireworks. There are communities that run their own farmers markets or run youth activities such as movie nights. And so, I think that the challenge that we have, of course, is having quality programming in our community that also benefits the quality of life of the people who live here without putting a huge strain on municipal services. And I 100% agree, it would be wonderful if we didn't have to fund these programs and we could just pay for them ourselves. But we can't, at the moment anyways, maybe someday. So, I just wanted to say, it is a concern of mine as well. I get it. But I do know that the benefits of these specific programs with delivering back to the community is, really builds on community and quality of life, in my opinion anyways, so.
Further comments, questions from the councilors? Public comment for this agenda item. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you very much. Item number 10?
10, yes. Item number 10, Resolve: Authorizing the Use of $1,500 from the Farrar Fund for Costs of Basic Necessary Services for Needy Individuals. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing the use of $1,500 from the Farrar Fund for Costs of Basic Necessary Services for Needy Individuals.
Madam Clerk, please.
So moved.
Councilor Chittam.
Second.
Second by Councilor Glant. Deputy Administrator O'Malley, could you speak to the Farrar Fund for a quick second? Or Director Roy, would you like to speak to the Farrar Fund for a quick second?
So, this is used for individuals, mostly for medication that are not covered. It's $18,550 of principal that accumulates interest. And to date, we have $10,000 of interest in that fund. So, every year, they request $1,500 for social services to use for those individuals that don't have the coverage and that don't qualify on the state side.
Thank you. Counselor Chittam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've explained that we have a surfeit of interest on the $18,000 principal. And the provisions of the grant, if I'm reading between the lines here, or the donation, are that we maintain that corpus and do not touch it. There's language in here that suggests that we have a policy or a procedure that we don't use any more than the interest that was accrued last year. And I could not find that anywhere. So, my question is, what prevents us from using the full $10,000?
I would have to look and see the document and see what's required.
Again, my reading is that the requirement between the lines is that we maintain the corpus. So, we built up a substantial interest on this. And it looks to me as though it's a standard $1,500 annual donation or utilization of this. If that's the case and we're earning interest on the interest, which I presume we are, we're going to reach a point where we're seeing more than $1,500 in interest come in. What is to prevent us from using that excess interest right down to the $18,000 corpus?
That would be your, your decision. I'd have to look back and look at what we had for interest yearly. Currently, we're starting to see it, interest go down. Prior to, three years ago, we were not receiving a lot of interest for these funds. The $10,000 was accumulated much earlier in the timeframe. So, I'd have to look at what actually has accumulated within the year for that fund.
Thank you. Do we find that the $1,500 is dispersed very quickly?
Elaine, Director Brackett, has not stated that she needs more than that. She uses the $1,500. She has never requested more.
Okay. Well, that's a great answer. Thank you.
Counselor Najin, did you have something?
That was basically my question, whether or not we actually expend the $1,500 per year. But I would like, I know that we had covered a little bit of it last time, but if we could just get more information on how this fund was actually set up. From what I understand, it was a resident that had set up this fund and then donated it to the city for management. Is that correct?
I will go through the documentation.
Yeah, if you could just forward it to me, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Okay. Public comment for this agenda item. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Item number 11.
Item number 11, Resolve: Approving the Final Budget Adjustments to the Fiscal Year 26 Municipal Budget. Requested action to adopt the resolve approving the final budget adjustments to the fiscal year 26 municipal budget.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Counselor Chittam, followed by Councilor Glant. Would you like to kick this off, Director Roy?
So, tonight I gave you the updated version. There was two items that I had left off. It does not change the amount. It was just, they were missed when I was doing the adjustments and noticed it when I was putting it into the actual system to update everything. So, I added those and gave you a new copy. But it's the same amount that was put forth the night that we had the general discussion.
Thank you. Anything further, Director Roy?
No.
Counselor Chittam.
Thank you. I see Director Gagne is here in the audience. And I'm noticing that the additional funds were made up by a reduction in overtime salaries for winter operations to the tune of about $10,000. I'm wondering how that works with the Public Works Department.
I appreciate all the department heads here to take our questions live. Director Gagne, please.
Good evening. Kevin Gagne, Director Lewiston Public Works. We've looked at these adjustments. And I think, you know, given the current trends in our, in our weather, we can accommodate these, these cuts. So, we support it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Further comments from the council? Public comment for this agenda item. Back to the council. Director Roy, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Item number 12.
Item number 12, Resolve: Making an Appropriation for Municipal Budget Year 2026. Requested action to approve the resolve making an appropriation for municipal budget year 2026.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam.
Second.
Standing by Councilor Glant. Director Roy.
Just wanted to point out, I know the school budget comes after ours, but if you noticed in one of the last resolves, it is approving the portion of the tax base of the school. So, I just want to keep that in mind. No other comments?
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Chittam.
Thank you. This may be a pro forma question, but the 15th of March 2026 is a Sunday. That's the date that taxes are due, and yet they cannot be, unless it's postmarked, they can't be delivered to City Hall later than the 12th, effectively cutting three days off because of our Friday closures. I'm wondering if it would create all kinds of havoc if we moved the date on March 2026 to the 16th, which would be the following, the Monday.
I am sorry. I must have missed that when I was going through the calendar. So, yes, it would need to be moved to Monday.
All right, then.
So, that would be an amendment that would be needed.
I think I made the amendment, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second for this amendment?
Second.
Counselor Roy, second discussion, yes. Counselor Najin.
I'm just looking in the resolve. And it says March 16, 2026, on the first page of the resolve at the bottom.
Yes.
Does it not?
It does, yes.
So, was it March 15, 2025, is what you're saying?
Um...
I'm just trying to track, track down that.
Okay. In the...
One second, Counselor Chittam. Anything further, Counselor Najin?
No, I just, I'm asking for...
Yes, Counselor Chittam, please.
In the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph, the due date is the 15th of September in March. The 5th paragraph stipulates that the interest accrues on the day following the due date, the 16th of September in March. I'm suggesting, and I would make a friendly amendment if it would be accepted by my secondor, to make the taxes due and payable on the 16th of March 2026 with interest accruing beginning on the 17th of March 2026.
Correct.
Thank you for that clarification.
Madam Clerk, so do we have an amendment on the floor, or is this a friendly amendment?
I can be handed by a friendly amendment, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, as long as Counselor Chittam and Counselor Galant conclude.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
I think we're in agreement over here, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Further questions, comments from the council before we go to public comment? We are now going to public comment.
Hello, Wendy McPike. I'm an Auburn resident, but I own property in four wards in Lewiston. One of the resolves, I'm a little late to the table here. Somehow, I missed this one. You have a policy that when a person is owed back taxes, that any tax payment is made to the, applied to the oldest tax burden. We have purchased property here creatively. And in the past, we purchased property that was, had a substantial tax burden that was owed. And when I figured this out and we went through this process, everything's current and happy now. But when we went through the process, it was cumbersome. It was awful. I mean, I've talked to everyone on the staff and went through lots of process. When you pay the oldest first and you get into a payment plan, in good faith, you're paying, you have to pay the current tax due. And then you have a payment plan for the past due balance. So, when you in good faith pay the current, it goes applied to the old tax bill. If you have several properties, it doesn't matter that you pay a property on River Street and you owe a tax burden on Pier Street. The tax gets paid from your river. It gets applied to Pierce. So, that process then starts to snowball with fees and possibly liens, which we had on property that was in good faith paid. So, it's quite, and the paperwork that is, has to be done by the staff is a lot. Liens get filed. They go to the registry, multiple mailings. It's just, it really is a nightmare. So, I know I'm a little late to this. It's already kind of established. It's something that's been done for years. But in good faith, paying your current and then having a payment plan that pays the oldest would be more appropriate and fair. I can, I was going to bring this stack of papers just from one property that I had to go through. So, that's it.
Further public comment? Back to the council. Yes, Counselor Chittam.
Director Roy, is this something that's governed by city policy procedure, or is this state law?
We have it in the appropriation resolve, but it is, there's requirements from the state on when liens are filed. And if we were to most, when they do researches, lawyers are supposed to do the research, closing lawyers are supposed to do the research to make sure that back taxes are paid and that water and sewer, stormwater is paid. They're supposed to check on liens and make sure all of those are done so that during the closing, those costs are paid. And we usually receive a check. So, it cleans up those old ones beforehand. So, I would have to go through the state laws. But in here, you're proving that the payments go to the oldest if there are remaining taxes that are owed funds.
Thank you, Director Roy. I certainly don't want to hold up the city and school budgets for this, but I do want to make certain that if we've got taxpayers who are trying to get out from underneath the burden and are doing so in good faith, I think we want to make it as easy as possible. Not having the information about what's required under state law, there's no way we can address this tonight. But I'm wondering who, who on staff or what sort of committee, finance committee, who would look into how this burden might be made a little easier for folks who are legitimately trying to get out from underneath a back tax burden?
Right. So, we do do payment plans. Our department, the Finance Department, we do work with individuals to do payment plans. We make sure that they're reasonable, that they're not paying over 10 years. But we do work with individuals to get that done and we meet with them. The tax collector, and we have an individual who works specifically on delinquents, that will work with individuals to do payment plans. But the state does require us to file liens if taxes aren't paid within 18 months.
I'm just, again, looking for a way to make the process as painless as possible. And again, we can't, we can't resolve this problem tonight. But I want to thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yes, thank you. Further, further questions from the council? Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 2?
Counselor Najin, did you have a question?
Yeah, we were at public comment, and then, so this is, we're approving the budget right at this moment, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Public comment was opened and then closed, and then recognized. Yeah.
So I would like to just say a couple of things really quick.
Yeah, please.
Thank you so much. So I have had residents reach out with concerns about the continuing increases in taxes. I will say this. It is a challenge without an increasing tax base to provide the exact same services that you're used to in this community without seeing an increase in the overall tax as well. And so I know this is hard for a few people, for sure, that have voiced it to me directly. And I wanted it to have a net neutral budget, which just simply isn't possible. The budget that was presented to us was very, very stripped down. The conversation, I think, going forward is what this municipality actually provides to the taxpayer. And so if we want to have a conversation around what we're cutting as a service from any department in the city, that's the type of conversation we actually have to have, as opposed to, I don't want my taxes to go up even though the cost of all services goes up. And so, you know, I apologize, I was unable to deliver a net neutral budget. I certainly wanted to. But it's not possible without losing services that are currently provided now, or employees, so.
Thank you. Further comments from councilors? Counselor Najin, or, sorry, Counselor Chittam, yes.
Counselor Najin, thank you very much for pointing that out. It's very obvious to us up here that with increases on everything from soup to nuts, it is impossible for us to continue delivering the same services to Lewiston residents without an increase in cost. It's just not realistic. I wish very much that we could say, guess what? Your tax increase this year is a negative, and you're going to be paying less, fewer dollars in taxes than last year. But until we stop plowing the snow in the wintertime and collecting the garbage and teaching our children, that's just not a reasonable expectation. Again, I thank Acting Administrator, Deputy Administrator O'Malley for his work and diligence in trying to keep this increase as low as possible. But I'm sorry to say this, but to those folks who say, "I cannot afford the minimal increase that has been passed or will soon be passed by this budget", that's life. That's life. Thank you, Counselor Najin, for pointing that out.
Counselor, Counselor Glantz, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're all going to throw a 2 cents in. So I'm going to give you 3 cents worth. The reality is, we have not had a good evaluation in the city in ages. Had we, on a normal basis, like other cities do, had tax evaluations as they would do and required every 10 years, or there too, we wouldn't be sitting here today arguing over pennies. So quite frankly, years ago, people who sat up here, who were trying to help individuals, which we are trying to do as well, each year kept kicking this can down the road. I know we're all worried about evaluations, but to be quite frank with you, the reason the system is set up like this right now is because people were trying to protect people or help them. Had they come up with small increases every 10 or 5 years, then people would be already adjusting into the changes that are coming. That's kind of what's happening. And that's what people have to realize, quite frankly, is we're in a situation that was given to us, us being the city, not just us councilors out here, that we're trying to correct and to fix. And until we get our taxes to where they should be, quite frankly, that's what's going to happen. And I'll use my own home as an example. I have a very beautiful home that I pay $130,000 worth of taxes on that's probably worth close to 400. That's a broken system. Had that been adjusted along the way, my taxes would have come up slowly, not maybe as much as they're going to come up here eventually, and we'd have money here in our budget to do the things and keep services and take care of our schools and all the things that have to happen. So right now, we're going through this quick adjustment, and hopefully we'll stay on board with adjusting it either every 5 or 10 years after this, so we don't have a counselor 10 years from now sitting here trying to tell you what I'm telling you today. And again, I want to be zero if it's possible. The number we came in at, based on all the things that came around us, is a pretty good number. Thank you.
Further comments from councilors? Yeah, I want to thank all the department heads. Director Roy, now Deputy Administrator O'Malley. Yeah, I mean, this is, this is within the realm of reason. I think residents understand that costs go up. We are able to keep all city staff and keep what we're doing now for a reasonable increase. I get that any increase is tough, but it's within the realm of reason. And yeah, we appreciate everyone's efforts. Any further comments from councilors? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Very much, Madam Clerk. Thank you, councilors. Item number 13.
Item number 13, Resolve: Approving the Fiscal Year 26 Budget for the Lewiston School Department. Requested action to approve the resolve approving the, I'm sorry, to adopt the resolve approving the fiscal year 26 budget for the Lewiston School Department.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam.
Second.
Second by Counselor Harriman. We have Superintendent Lingless here. I invite you to the podium to say a few words, if you would like.
Jake Lingless, Superintendent, I'd like to say as few words as possible. I do want to commend the school committee for doing extensive work over the last eight weeks since they started with the budget, going through lines and tried to write by our taxpayers here the message last year.
We have some school committee members here present and school staff. Thank you all so much. Comments, questions from councilors? Counselor Najin?
The only thing I would say is continue to build out the special needs programming within the school system. I think what you've set up is going to bear a lot of fruit in the long term. And I greatly appreciate it from the municipal perspective, looking at the city, looking at the school budget. I'd also like to just recognize the work of the delegation in order to make sure that appropriations were better than they have been in the past, taking into account a lot of the challenges that we have within our community. And so I greatly appreciate that as well.
Public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council. Wait, oh, yes. Step right up, sir.
Can you hear me? My name's David Rakmels, live in Ward 1, resident and taxpayer. I want to talk about fear. Nobody wants to be afraid. Fear is an involuntary emotional biological response to perceived threats. Fear paralyzes thinking, inhibits curiosity and learning, and fosters mistrust. It is corrosive to community building. For some, fear is also a tool. It can be used to manipulate others' perceptions of reality as well as directly impact their behavior. Witness Big Brother in Orwell's 1984, dictators like Putin and Kim, or the schoolyard bully in Any Town USA. Last fall, we heard from some brave education professionals about concerns for children in their care who are experiencing fear in the classroom. We also heard from community members who investigated students' experiences of violence in the community and their levels of trust in the institutions to whom were entrusting their care, including the schools, public safety officers, and others. The school committee's first instinct on hearing this information was the correct one. There is a problem. We need to thoroughly understand it so that solutions can be offered. An ad hoc subcommittee on safety and discipline was announced. A separate multicultural subcommittee was also proposed, and the idea of combining them was put forward. These were good ideas. What happened to them? Instead of a community dialogue about what is happening inside our schools, the community was offered an extended joint presentation by the school administration and the police department, where we got to see the variety of weapons and drugs that the police are encountering, not in our schools, but on our streets. The presentation was complete with trigger warnings, but what was triggering wasn't the content, it was the setting, an elementary school cafeteria. That was a bad idea. Where did it come from? Instead of a community dialogue about what is happening inside, I'm sorry, I'm repeating. A team, organization, or community in which fear and mistrust are prevalent will be neither efficient nor effective. In such an environment, risk is avoided, ideas are not shared, creative solutions don't surface, and problems fester. Lewiston residents deserve transparency, accountability, and a commitment to working together in good faith to address our most pressing problems, including our schools. I plan to vote no on the budget and suggest the council and my fellow residents do the same, not because the amount of money is inadequate or the tax increase too great, but because the committee is failing in its oversight responsibilities. The problems in our schools need to be talked about in a way that is serious, that is civil, and that is honest. Our children and the community at large are owed nothing less. That should be non-negotiable.
Further public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council. Counselor Sol?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to just thank you for all the work you've done. I know you guys worked really hard. We went through the same thing. It's not easy, especially with your ever-growing enrollment, underpaid teachers. You have a lot of pieces to your budget that you just have no control over, and I understand that. And I know that we can't make everyone happy. I still try, but I, we can try to make everyone feel heard and supported. Ultimately, we're up, we've been voted to sit up here to speak on behalf of the residents, not just our own personal feelings. And it's not, I don't think that the budget's too high. I certainly don't think it's too low. I have a lot of the same feelings. It's maybe where the funds are going. But we don't have that authority up here, so that makes it very hard to explain how we feel about the budget. But what I am hearing is, there's not a lot of positive. And my fear is, we're going to end up right back here again. I don't know what you can do to make this budget more friendly to the public, but my fear is that we will end up back here. But you did a great job. I watched all your meetings. I know that you guys worked really hard, so I do appreciate that. So yeah, education is important, and I hope voters get out there and vote. So thank you.
Further public comment? Yes, Counselor Chittam?
Yes, could you remind us, please, when the public referendum is?
May 13th. Folks can vote from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. at the elementary school, next Tuesday, one week.
Thank you. May 13th. Please vote.
Anything further, Superintendent? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
No.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 6 to 1.
Thank you very much. Item number 14.
Item number 14, Resolve: Making an Appropriation for the Special Revenue Funds for Municipal Budget Year 2026. Requested action to approve the resolve making an appropriation for the special revenue funds for municipal budget year 2026.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Counselor Chittam, second by Counselor Glantz. Director Roy, do you want to kick us off?
So tonight I gave you an updated TIF budget. Again, this is estimated. The CMP TIF still has not been approved, so this is estimated. If it doesn't come through, then the expenses will not be spent. We do have enough to cover the additional salaries that we had put into the budget, so I just wanted to clarify that for you. There's no other, unless you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Yes, questions from the council, comments? Public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
We are now up to the second public comment. Should there be somebody who didn't speak during the first public comment, you may now speak now. Yes, you understand what I mean. Public comment is now closed. We are now up to reports and updates from councilors. Yeah, not all at once. Counselor Glantz?
I don't have a report or update, but I do want to remind the citizens that they can get an absentee ballot currently for the school budget upstairs. So if you can't get over there on Tuesday, please get over there next couple of days, and don't come Friday because we're not here.
So if we could just clarify, Counselor, if you don't mind, so the deadline to request an absentee ballot is end of business on Thursday. So they have tomorrow and Thursday to request an absentee ballot, and they can come into the office and vote, or we will mail it to their home. All absentee ballots need to be returned by Tuesday at 8:00 p.m. We have mailed out over 130 absentee ballots already. By state law, folks cannot return those to us until the council adopts the school budget, which you just did now. So if anyone's watching and they have an absentee ballot at home, they can now turn those into the office. The drop box will be open and unlocked tomorrow, tomorrow morning, first thing, so they can return it through the drop box as well. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Glantz?
No, sir.
Counselor Chittam?
Yes, I just wanted to announce that the CityLink bus service contract has been awarded to a new contractor, RTW, from away. And I'm sorry, I can't remember where they're from. It's west of the Mississippi. They already operate the Portland-Auburn-Lewiston commuter bus, but they will be taking over the CityLink purple buses as of, I believe it's October 1st. That's the news from L A T C.
Thank you. Further updates and reports from councilors? Up to new business from the council, should there be any? Yes, Counselor Najin?
First, I'm wondering if we could add an agenda item to the next meeting to, or a report out concerning the Martell School Project. Either invite LHA to attend, or at least get a report out so that we can find out where Martell is, as well as possibly any projects they might want to illuminate us on as a partner in this community for affordable housing. So that's one piece. And then I just want to quickly go over a couple of things that have kind of come to my attention that I think we might want to address. So one of those is that I was reached out to by somebody who was looking to run a home-based business that involved a food manufacturer that was licensed by the state, and under the food sovereignty laws of the state would normally be permitted, with the exception of the fact that we actually license micro and small businesses, home businesses separately. And so I think maybe having a conversation, maybe through a workshop, concerning the licensing of, I would refer to them as micro businesses. So we're talking about businesses that are making less than $20,000 a year in order to sell food from their homes when they're already licensed by the state. Our requirements are different because of our zoning, as well as the fact that we require licensing here as well. And last time I checked, our sanitarium was actually on loan from the state. So basically, it was enforcing state law within the community. So I think maybe that's a good way to kind of support small business within our communities and within our neighborhoods. But maybe there's reasons why we don't do it. And so I would like to see, I'd like to see if we can explore that. And just one other piece that I'd like to touch on is that when we, we have several committees that we do reports and updates from the councilors, but I think it would be great if we could get to the point where either as an agenda item or as a brief workshop before each council meeting, we actually have those committees come and report to the council. the council. I think that that would be very helpful in recognizing the folks that are doing work within the different committees, as well as the fact that like, not only, not always is the communication very clear, I think, with the general public, as well as the council, as far as what certain committees are working on. And so, I just want to kind of point that out, maybe we could set that up going forward. And so, those are the three things I just want to kind of touch on. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Galant.
I would just like to recap our budget scenario. We talked about different policies and procedures we want to look at. I'm hoping somebody kept track of them so we can make a list. I have a couple on mine, but I guess I'm asking my fellow councilors that we discuss those things, if we could get a copy off to the administrator so we can prioritize what we want to attack, seeing how we do have a less than vigorous summer schedule so we can go ahead and start piecemealing these together, because we did, a lot of things came up. So, I would ask all of you to think back to what we talked about, I have two or three I'm going to send in myself, but we can maybe figure a priority so we just don't, you know, take to the low hanging fruit first or what we think's really important to get changed.
Further, yes, new business from councilors. May I have a motion? Yes, Counselor Chittum.
I think you're asking for a motion to adjourn.
I was just about to, but should you have new business first or?
No, I was going to accommodate you.
Madam Motion to adjourn.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Chittum, seconded by Counselor Najin. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you to all the city staff who were here tonight. Thank us again to our new city administrator. Thank you to our now deputy city administrator. And Madam Clerk, thank you so much. Lewiston, you have a wonderful evening. Good night.